We're able to stand to please do so. Good evening.
Can I ask you all to please stand and bow your heads? Heavenly Father, please guide this city council, the leadership of this community, to make the right decisions for this wonderful city. We thank you for the many blessings you've given us, for all the wonderful opportunities that we have here in this country. We ask you to watch over the men and women that are fighting for our country, our firefighters, our police officers, and all the safety personnel that keep us safe. Also, watch over this month as many graduates are now moving on in their life and becoming a part of adulthood and moving on to college. Please keep them blessed and help them make the right decisions. For these things, we ask you, Lord, amen.
Amen, thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, please face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, thank you, and good evening. We'll close on behalf of Ben Reese, longtime resident of the city of Baldwin Park, was a resident of Baldwin Park for more than thirty-five years. He passed away late last month. Ben was received in death by his daughter Natalie and son Brandon. He is survived by his wife, forty years, Carolyn, their daughters Stephanie and son Matthew, four grandchildren, and numerous family friends. Ben will always be remembered for his caring and generous heart, his loving and giving way and infectious smile. Please join me in extending our condolences to the Reese family so we could send out a letter to the family for our deepest condolences.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, were you done?
Yes.
Because we also have another person celebrating their anniversary, so of course we have to celebrate them as well. Mrs. Marie Contreras and Mr. Al Contreras are celebrating twenty-six years of marriage. Mr. Contreras, stand up. I think it's lovely to see couples last, you know, so long in this, you know, era where we don't see a lot of married couples last seen. So I congratulate you as well as the couple that was up here for fifty years. So I think it's fantastic, so congratulations to both of you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else, yes, council member Monica Garcia?
Go ahead, Marie.
No, well, I would like to congratulate Susan Rubio Hernandez because they're celebrating their first anniversary on Father's Day and hope you go a long way. God bless you.
Absolutely.
Mayor, and she remembers because it's on her birthday, that's why she's always going to remember that.
That's funny. Yes, council member Monica Garcia.
I'd like to close on behalf of Cliff Morimoto. He is a neighbor to my mom and was there along with the Morimoto family when my family moved into Baldwin Park and moved into the home that we still have in nineteen eighty. And they're wonderful, wonderful people, wonderful couple. We've seen the generations pass. Last year, his wife passed, and this year, he succumbed to pneumonia. And so we will miss him dearly and want to extend our condolences on behalf of the city council, close on his behalf and in his memory, and also extend our condolences to their, you know, surviving children and grandchildren, great-grandchildren as well. I also want to close on behalf of yet another neighbor, unfortunately, who passed unexpectedly and in his early forties. And it was a very tragic and sudden death. His name is Jose Arostegui, also known as Pepe, and his family is actually holding the services this evening. If there's anybody here who'd be interested in supporting their funeral fund, because it happened so quickly and they were just completely taken by surprise, then definitely see me. But definitely want to close on their behalf, in their memory, and extend our condolences. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Also, I just want to say Rafael Gonzalez, our librarian here, want to thank you. This past Saturday, had an opportunity to visit the Mariachi Magico, and what a, what a great performance. It was a Saturday afternoon, and it was packed in there. Really enjoyed the show, and I know they're coming back, I think sometime this month, am I correct? Later this summer. If you haven't had an opportunity to see this group, they will have you laughing and very entertaining, not only for the youth that were there, but also for the adults like myself. So thank you very much, and we're looking forward to the library opening up sometime, hopefully soon. I know that construction takes time and so on and so forth, so we look forward and want to thank you for that. Alright, so at this point, we have a presentation that we have, and it's the presentation by the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District for Barnes Park Improvement. So do we have a representative for that?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, they have canceled and would like to reschedule for...
Oh, then let's reschedule. Thank you very much.
Later meeting, thank you.
Manny Carrillo. At this point, I will now open the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name, you have approximately three minutes. Well, look who's here.
Yeah, this will be the first. Thomas Carey, a former resident.
Oh, excuse me. You know what? Oh, go ahead and knit this, and then we'll go to roll call. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Are you sure you want to do it that way?
That's fine.
Okay. I see, are you talking about the railroad and that?
Yes.
Told you five or six years ago, that was a quality of life issue. That's what you're going to have to drive home. That and the killing of property values with that damn noise. It's just, ugh. And then there's that one in the blue, the small train that goes by with the freight. That guy doesn't know when to quit. He sits right here, pulling and blowing at nine o'clock at night. I mean, that's pretty inconsiderate. I don't live here, but I don't like that kind of noise. And if I was looking for a place over here, I'd definitely stay away from the railroad tracks because I don't like that kind of noise. Nobody should like that kind of noise. This, yeah, this doesn't have anything to do with Baldwin Park. In a way, it does. What they did to Sterling, they're beating him to death. I admit the man is no angel, but neither are some of those other league owners. They're no angels either. What's said in private is supposed to stay that way. This sets a dangerous precedent. It really does. And the fact that free speech, I guess, isn't free. Vladimir Putin is watching over in Russia. That's why he's able to come in and do whatever he wants to do in Crimea and places. You think he's going to stop in Ukraine? Not likely. I know it doesn't have much to do with us yet, but it could reactivate the Cold War and things like that. We could have trouble. We could have a war. That's what we could have. This thing with Sterling, this is ridiculous. I admit the man is no angel, but it just sets a dangerous precedent. The city attorney can talk to you more about that. I see Michael Taylor's not here tonight. Is he going to be here later, or?
No, he is off today.
Oh, okay. I was going to talk to him about something, but it can wait. But, yeah, the main thing is, like you say, the quality of life is being destroyed by that train. It's ridiculous. I was sitting in the car, it's blowing at Merced, and I can hear it with my, my hearing is half what it should be, and I can hear that thing coming. What's it like living next to that? I can't imagine hearing that. What does it run, fourteen hours a day, through the day, back and forth? And the express train blowing through here at seventy miles an hour? You know what's going to happen if that train jumps the tracks? Anybody thought about that? They don't allow cars to tear through Baldwin Park or anywhere else going seventy miles an hour, but they allow that train to go tearing through there at that speed? Or is it sixty-nine miles an hour? You know? I just don't understand why they allow that train to come through there so fast. And if they want to go fast, they should have put the train down the middle of the freeway. That'd be in a better place for it. So I know there was something else I was going to cover, but I can't remember what it is. There was one other thing. I was driving around Baldwin Park today, looking at houses I saw for sale. It's awful hot in San Bernardino, so...
Your three minutes are up, Thomas.
I saw that there were a lot of junk cars that can be seen from the street. What's the city's code enforcement doing about that?
Oh, okay. Sorry, thank you.
I was trying to squeeze an extra half second.
Great seeing you. Good trick. You tricked me there.
I heard you on that. Okay, thank you.
Can we do a roll call now?
Alright, at this point, real quick, before you go on, we're going to go into roll call, so, yes, Madam City Treasure.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Present.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Present.
Mayor Potem Ricardo Pacheco? Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present, thank you very much. Alright, sorry about that. So at this point, Mr. Rafael Gonzalez, the librarian, yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Lozano. Good evening, council members, elected staff, city staff. What the mayor said is so true. We had a wonderful, wonderful program this past Saturday, May thirty-first. Rafael Encatias Mariachi Magic was wonderful. I mean, they entertained, they brought a lot of laughter to all of us, including the mayor. And I just wanted to come up and just say, Mayor, thank you so much for being, you know, for spending part of your afternoon there with us. Teacher Jean Ayala, who's here, you know, thank you, Jean.
Oh, Jean was there.
It was wonderful. We had close to a hundred people on a very warm Saturday afternoon, you know, so thank you. Thank you for your support, Mayor Lozano.
Rafael, oh, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry about that.
What you've asked, we do plan to have Rafael Encatia once again, and hopefully when the library reopens, so hopefully later this, this summer. They do a wonderful, wonderful job, and, you know, needless to say, they, you know, they show their talent again. We're going to be kicking off the summer reading program. It's going to be next Wednesday, June eleventh, and we'd love to have you there, Mayor Lozano, again. It's going to be in the, in the community center. It's going to be at four o'clock, and so I hope that you can be there and help us, you know, launch our summer reading program. And thank you, Councilwoman Cruz Baca. You were busy this weekend, and I understand it was an election weekend, and it was a big election, you know, yesterday, so, so thank you for the kind words. And so we hope to see you and any other council members. I know you support us, and it's, it's a busy time for all of you, but if you have a chance to attend one of the summer reading programs, they're going to be Wednesdays, starting June eleventh through July thirty-first. So once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rafael.
Thank you, Manny, and thank you to your staff.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, move along. Mr. Luna, good evening.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mr. Luna. I need to thank the people that are helping me trying to clean up the other side of the freeway on the south side. I finally got through different channels. I finally got to talk to Mrs. Sylvia Delgado from Caltrans, and her and I are trying to work together to clean up that area where thousands of people per week or month or whatever come to visit Kaiser because of medical or whatever reason they got to come there. Or also for the great relatives, residents of Baldwin Park that live on that side, and we get to see this mess every day. I walk there Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and MCM, the company that's, the fly over, they're doing very good or trying very hard to keep their area clean. But Flatiron and Caltrans have not done very good. So I told her that, and she is going to try to correct that as much as possible. I know you people should know, but don't know, when you come off of Fraser and you make a left turn going around towards Kaiser, there's no walkway around that corner. Before, when that house was there, I mean, it was very narrow. They tore down the house because they had to move a power line, but then they left the rest of it just like that. So every day that when I walk through there, I have to walk through this dirt path because they're too lazy to put in the proper equipment or asphalt walkway. So I'm saying, you city officials have to get out and look at this city. I understand you've got other jobs or whatever you may do, but you work for the city of Baldwin Park, and you, as the public, address the public, you should be able to go and say, this isn't right, you need to change it. We shouldn't have to specifically come and tell you every meeting. It should be as a group, including the lawyer, because you're going to need him. Walk out there, see these people that don't do nothing to their places, it looks like a dump, and ask them, you know, can you, can we help you, or do you need help, or so on and so on? I think that would make more people come to meetings when they get results. If you don't get results, you say, oh, forget it, let them do whatever the hell they want. That's not a good view. You want to be able to say, well, look, the city council got that done last week, this week they took care of that, and so on and so on. You become more popular with the public. If you don't go out as a group and see all this destruction that goes on in this city that you don't get to see, you would feel a lot better when you would sit down here and address us. When we address you folks, we would like the same response. I don't particularly have good things to say all the time, but when I do have, I appreciate anything you folks do for us, citizens of Baldwin Park, because you don't do it for me, you do it for all of us. As far as tax money goes, when you draw up corporations you put on the wall, businesses you put over here, or whatever, think of the revenue you can bring to us city residents. That's number one project. Every time you have a non-exempt person come here and put up a building and we get no tax revenue, that means...
Mr. Luna, your three minutes are up.
That means the mayor's going to have to raise taxes, and I say no.
Alright, alright. Alright, thank you, Mr. Luna, I appreciate that. Alright, move on. Al Contreras?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Happy anniversary, sir.
Thank you very much.
What are you guys going to go with, taco nazo?
Uh, frijoles and Taco Bell.
Alright, sounds good, alright.
Anyways, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have two issues right here, and they're not issues, just an update. Valley County Water District, on our next meeting, will be passing our second and final reading for water conservation, which right now, we're asking our residents and our users as a voluntary to, for reduction. After this, we won't be voluntary, we will have the right to actually make it mandatory, and we would notify our people. It's very simple rules, so if you guys want to know more about it, please come to our next Valley County Water Board Director's meeting. On another issue, so that's the updates on our water county. Our, a week from today, we have our visitors. We'll have fifteen, fifteen visitors coming from Tascoguerrero, arriving at June eleventh around noon. So we'll, I'll give an itinerary of what we're going to be doing. Hopefully, some of you can join us, talking about Father's Day, our despedida we'll be having instead of enjoying Father's Day with the family, we're going to be hosting right here in a little despedida, going away right here, Arts and Community Center. So hopefully, you guys can participate in at least one of the items. And, but the Baldwin Park Sisters Association gave out fourteen scholarships, not a lot of money, but it is the largest of scholarships that we've ever given through our history. We gave eight scholarships to students for Baldwin Park High School, and some of you here participated in the giving of those scholarships, and we gave six scholarships to Sierra Vista High School students. And with me, hopefully, we can get more participation. We have Anna Lujan, our president of the board, Sylvia Bañuelos, Rafael Gonzalez, Susan Rubio, and my wife, Marie Contreras, and hopefully, you guys can help us fund or participate or welcome in our group, at least at one of the events. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much, Al Contreras. Alright, at this point, Mr. Woods.
I'm Mr. Reyes. After hearing all of these announcements about anniversaries, you forced me to announce that Carol and I, as of June sixteenth, will be married fifty-eight years.
Whoa, whoa. Wow, wow, fifty-eight. Holy cow.
You sure I got you, Mr. Woods?
Now, that's a rarity. Congratulations.
John Reyes, I've been going around the town. One of the graffiti's most damaging is on the railway. I know that that belongs to Caltrans, not Caltrans, but Metro, and we need to go, go after them. It does look bad for the children next to the school, they see it every day. We need to get after them, come to straighten up or do something. Get a contractor to go in there and clean it up. They have the technology, they can put cameras and take pictures of the kids that are going in there. They have the power right there, they have everything in there, you know? And I've been going to Barnes Park. How long is that construction going to be? All the way to September, after the summer goes by? They've been working on it for how long?
Been working on that for about, just a little over a month and a half, and they should be done mid-July.
Because I've gone there the whole week, and I don't see nobody working there.
Yeah, they...
You know? They're like any contractor, they go from one place to another, keep everybody happy.
Concrete's curing too.
Yes. And a lot of the things that I've noticed on the parks, they need to get about, I would say, better cleaning crews or some to take care of the facilities, because I've been going through them, and they're not being taken care of, okay? Another thing is on Walnut Creek, the water's still not on. Because trees are dying and everything. You know, I see the workers over there, they're doing their best, but, you know, they can't be carrying the water in there by buckets. You know, we need to get, and do something about that. I know we have a grant for the Walnut Creek Park, when are they going to start working on it? There's a lot of termites in the building, stuff like that, you know? The electrical's still not working, you know? I talked to Daniel over here during the week, and I told him there's a big holes in the fancying in the back. He's going to take care of that because people just go in and out any time of the day or night, okay? But let's see what we can do so we can straighten up the city, especially with the graffiti. The graffiti, the biggest problem is that you can go to Nichols, Home Depot, whatever, big...
Mr. Reyes, I'm sorry, your time's up.
It's that you can go to the swap meet and get those cans.
Well, thank you very much. Alright, move along with public communication. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir, good evening.
My name is Phil Sarantino. I just want to know who owns the city? Is anybody own the city, or the people own it?
People own the city.
Okay. How was the chance of getting some recreation in the city? Like a bowling alley, miniature golf course, and stuff like that? What's the chance of doing that?
Continue on, and then I'll answer once you finish. You have three, you have three minutes. Go ahead and just talk, and then...
First, that's the main thing I'm, I'm there for, like recreation, like for you, me, middle-aged people. This town has nothing for us. They have, they have something for the kids, a park, a couple of parks, but there's no bowling alley here, there's no miniature golf course here, there's no recreation for middle-aged people here, not even a bar, a club. That's all. You know? Have a good way down Covina, go bowling. Miniature golf course. There's empty by seven eleven. I'm just saying, you know? What do you guys think? That's it.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, alright, thank you very much. Alright, move along with public communication. See no further, I now declare the public communication closed. Real quick, I'll just say about the bowling alley. We had a bowling alley here when I moved in nineteen seventy-nine, and that did here. To bring something back like that would probably be a miracle if that occurred. I don't know how fancying, I don't know how much revenue they bring in, but nevertheless, we're doing our best to move Baldwin Park forward. Alright, so at this point, we're going to go into the consent calendar. So council members wishing to pull any item?
Yeah, I'll pull five.
Okay, number five.
Thank you.
Any others?
Well, we need to pull three for clarification for the direction that was given earlier.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right. Alright, so at this point, we'll go ahead and move consent calendar with the exception of items three and five. That's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second by council member Susan Rubio. Any objections? See none, so move. First one is the approval of the contract with the Brown Armstrong CPAs to provide professional auditing services, and I believe we're going to amend the contract itself versus certain provisions.
Well, we need to approve the contract tonight and give staff direction to come back with a amendment for staff continuity.
Okay. That was my understanding, Mr. Mayor. Alright, alright, thank you. So I'll go and make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any objections? See none, so move. Alright, next item is item number five, the authorized purchase of police cars. Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, for clarification purposes, it's a purchase for a vehicle for the police department, and in total, it's forty-four thousand, one hundred, five, and sixty-one. Once again, it only appears in the report. I just want to clarify that that comes from grant funds, and there is no fiscal impact to, to our general fund. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. At this point, can we entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, any objections? See none, so move. The other items that we have here is the public hearing. The first one is the public hearing for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget, and continued public hearing to June eighteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the municipal code for Baldwin Park has a public hearing for the budget scheduled at the first council meeting in, in June, and, which is tonight. However, you got, you received your material earlier today, and we have two budget study sessions next week, and so staff has recommended that you open the public hearing and then continue it to June eighteenth, so that the public will still have a chance to make comments after the study sessions.
Alright, so at this point, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in reference to the particular subject, which is the public for fiscal, the budget fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen. So it has to be on the actual budget itself, the actual item.
I'm notorious for going to the wrongs topic.
Okay.
Does the budget include cleaning up the graffiti in the city?
We have graffiti in the budget.
Okay, like over on the MetroLink over here on Los Angeles Street?
Part of, part of...
Whole wall is covered. I went by there today. Ooh, everybody, like you said about the cameras, is there money for that? Remote cameras to pick up who's ever wandering around over there at night and being able to re, get the reimbursement by impounding their vehicles or whatever it takes to pay for that damage that they keep doing over there? And the whole wall's covered. I don't know if there's other places, but it is really bad. It's all different colors, all different styles. Everybody has brothers over there doing that. You're going to need lots, some, you're going to have to get the money for that from somewhere. Maybe MetroLink with those high ticket prices can help cover it. There, right? That is there right away, where the, was it the public storage?
We've got to get back on the, on the actual item.
Okay.
Alright, okay.
There's some money in the budget to clean up that awful mess over there.
Yes, it is.
For the people that live here, and everybody that drives that corridor and has to see that awful mess. It's gang promotion. Okay, that's all.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, man.
At this point, continue on. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the current budget? Okay, at this point, I'm seeing none, I'll go ahead and move to those. Anyone opposing? See no interest? I'm going to leave the public hearing open until, right, continue, already. Okay, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and reports of officers, item number seven, which is a rail, railroad quiet zone. So who is handling this?
Mr. Wall will be giving a short report.
Okay, thank you, awesome.
At the previous council meeting, I was asked to bring information to the council on railroad quiet zones. The good news is that this is something that we can do, and this can be implemented over a number of years. The bad news is that the cost, just a preliminary estimate, is about four and a half million dollars.
Wow, four and a half million dollars?
Yeah. To, to do this on a citywide basis. So this would include the seven crossings that we currently have in the city. One of those is a pedestrian crossing, so six vehicle and pedestrian crossings, one pedestrian only crossing. This money could come from restricted funds, so we have Prop A funding, Prop C funding, gas tax. We also have vehicular and pedestrian safety grants that we could apply for a grant under those, under pedestrian and vehicular safety, and then roll it into doing these improvements. Again, this would probably be a several-year project. The first step to do this would be to actually hire a consultant who specializes in quiet zones to help them prepare the documents that would be necessary to submit to the CPUC to, to get this process underway. If the, if the council would give me direction to do that, I could submit an RFQ and bring back a, bring back some proposals to the council to get this thing...
I think, oh, hold on, maybe, yeah, I think we definitely should. I mean, these, as you see, sometimes they're honking them even more so than others, even though they're going across low and it's just incredible, right, at nighttime. Now, just let the general public know, the city of Pomona has a quiet zone and I know that Congresswoman Grace Napolitano was very active in assisting and looking for potential grants, so we might wanna, of course, I'm certain you're gonna touch everything there. So when you're saying that, so are we talking about in increments from specific railroad crossings?
Yes, we could do this on a crossing-by-crossing basis. We could construct it on a crossing-by-crossing basis. However, the, if a citywide quiet zone couldn't be implemented until all the improvements were done, the city could just break it up and decide which crossings are the most, you know, cause the most disturbance to residents and we could break it up any way you would like. There is a limit, though, it has, the minimum length has to be a half mile.
Oh.
So if we could do, you know, identify a couple of the worst offenders as far as crossings go and just attack it incrementally.
Now, out of curiosity, so basically, so we're, but eventually every one of them has to be equal, am I correct?
No, that's not true. We could, as a council, you guys could decide which crossings you wanna make into a quiet zone. The only limitation is, is that the CPUC doesn't like you to have a quiet zone and then not a quiet zone and then a quiet zone. So you could, you could select a section to work with and have that be your first project and then at a later time, do another project for another section.
Well, you know, actually, my, I was under, I was under the, well, my understanding was, I thought it would be inclusive of the whole city. So we're talking about, so there's certain areas that, so, well, let me just say this. Can a city not have, be a quiet zone completely as they're coming to Ballin Park?
Yes. So let me, let me, let me explain what, why they blow their whistles in the first place. So that horn that you hear happens as they approach a crossing.
Right.
And they're required a quarter mile before they get to the crossing to blow their horn and they blow it all the way through the crossing.
Yes, they do.
And it's a twenty-four-hour process. Also, if they see anybody on or near the tracks, they will blow their horn. With a quiet zone, because they do not need to blow their horns near or through the crossings. If somebody were on the tracks, they would still sound the horn, you know, just, but as a city, you could, the council could decide that you wanted to have one half-mile section to be a quiet zone. We could make the safety improvements on any crossings within that half-mile, declare it a quiet zone, the trains within thirty days of meeting all their requirements would not sound their horns. And then, as a council, you could decide that the next crossings, when you have the funds, you could do the same thing too and just continue throughout the city. No requirement to continue the program, you could just do it, you know, one small quiet zone and call it good, or you could decide to do the entire city.
Now, out of curiosity, then I'll go over to you. So are we changing the actual cross areas with some new, different types of safety poles or whatever?
So the concern is, the reason, the reason why they blow the whistles is to, is to let vehicles and pedestrians know, get off the tracks. What they wanna do is make it foolproof and that's the improvements we would have to do. So instead of having a gate arm on one side for northbound traffic and one side for southbound traffic, you have to actually isolate the tracks to keep people from driving on the wrong side of the road to get there. So it'd either be a long median, a minimum of a hundred feet of length that a vehicle can't drive over to separate them so no one can try to get around the gate arm, or you have four gate arms. When you, the reason why it's so expensive is because when you go to a four gate arm approach-
And here comes the train.
When you go to a four gate arm approach, you wanna make sure that a vehicle doesn't get stuck between the arms and on the track. So they have all kinds of safety devices that sense cars' presence and all that kind of thing, which adds to the cost of this. So that's why it's four and a half million dollars.
Okay, so four and a half million, we're talking about the whole, the whole-
And this is, again, this is a preliminary estimate, yeah, but about four and a half million would treat all of our crossings.
So this way, four and a half million so they could stop honking the horn, okay?
Yeah.
All righty, that's interesting. Okay, yes, sorry about it, council member.
Well, I just wanted to point out that I did put that on the agenda last time because I've actually heard people tell the mayor several times, you know, I've been telling you for a long time, you're not doing anything about it. I've also heard council member Cruz, Baca and Pacheco and I've heard that from our residents. So I just wanted to make sure that the residents understood, it's very technical and it's not that easy. So when I heard the million-dollar price tag, you know, it takes time and so, once again, for the benefit of our residents, I wanna just clarify that, you know, we would like it gone as much as you do and we're gonna work towards it, but it is, you know, time-consuming, it takes money and it takes a lot of staff time as well, but we'll work towards it. But we wanted to clarify how much it was, the process, and a lot of the residents are saying that they blow the whistle for no reason, so I wanted that clarification as well. They are required to blow it and so unfortunately, we cannot do anything about that, but once again, if we decide to move forward as a council to fix that problem, then little by little, we'll resolve it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, yes, council member Cruz-
I have one question for you, Dan.
Yes.
Because as, like council member Rubio said, probably everywhere, including last night's meeting that we had people bring up about the quiet zone that live along Ramona and Downing and Bogart, but there was a young man that was killed there about a year or so ago. Would that keep us from having a quiet zone there because of that problem?
No, it wouldn't. What the quiet zone does, the requirements of the quiet zone would be to make sure that it would be very difficult for a pedestrian or a car to get onto the tracks. And so that's, that's part of the reason why it's so expensive is we have to have those features to prevent that from happening.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, see no further questions, we'll go ahead and move on. My recommend-
New direction?
Yes, so the direction is for us to pursue the consulting, yeah, RFP, yes, exactly, and do some kind of presentation so we could look at what the long-term cost will be for the city, of course, four million or whatever the case may be. So yes, that will be the direction. Also, can we feature this in one of the now so that the residents know that all of us together are working to resolve this particular issue because you could hear that horn probably in all the 6.7 square miles of the city. So it just really, it's there. So if we could inform the residents, the staff that we're following, the time that it may take and what it entails for it. Yes, council member Monica Garcia.
Yeah, I just wanna mention, I mean, this is something that we've been talking about for some time. I know you have been in discussion with Congresswoman Grace Napolitano about this, trying to get some funding and I'm just glad that, you know, we are moving in the direction of at least considering the RFQ or, you know, submitting a request for qualifications and kind of taking those first steps. And if we can, continue to talk with the Congresswoman to see if there are any funds that she can help with or, you know, any other pots that we can consider. Prop A, like you said, maybe even our new supervisor, you know, I mean, it's worth looking at all the pots and all the funds that are available to us.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up. I just, well, when I ran into her several months back, I told her that we're going to pursue that and she said she would do anything she can, even though she did say it's a tough road because of the competitiveness of the funds. So absolutely, all right, thank you.
Mayor, I was just gonna add to, you wanted it on the now, I just wanna add that, you know, besides talking about the process and how we're headed that direction, little narrative to explain, you know, the legalities, for example, the requirement to blow the horn and, you know, and how long it takes. We just want them to really be informed that this is not a choice we have, but it's something that, you know, they have to do. So just a little narrative on that. Thank you.
Well, my, this is my suggestion because you know that I live right there by the MetroLink station and I think the whole problem, it's not so much the noise, it's the length of the noise, where I feel that the engineer or whoever it is is sitting on that horn longer than I think-
Yeah, oh, I agree.
From a distance.
I agree.
It's far. I can hear already that they're coming, they're not even close to the station. So I think if they could just sort of like, certain feet or whatever it is into the station there.
There's a requirement, it's a quarter mile before they hit the crossing, they have to be on the horn and all the way till the train is out of the crossing. So when the tail end of the train is out of the crossing, they can let go of the horn. So it's a, it's-
What is the distance between some of our crossings? Because I know you looked at that to where literally, does it almost, in several crossings, they never stop?
Yeah, several crossings, it's almost continuous.
Yeah. The one on Pacific and the one by us is seconds away from each other.
Yeah, and that's-
Oh, that's right.
Part of our-
That explains the-
Where our streets cross is, you're so close that the quarter mile in one point hits the quarter mile in the other crossing and so you just end up with one, literally one law.
Yeah.
But that's where, as Mr. Wall said, we could attack if you want, once we get the consultant incrementally and see where we go and which ones would have the most impact in terms of both residential and educational.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. Appreciate that and for that report. At this point, we'll go over to number eight, which is the adoption of resolution number 2014-17, establishing a title program. So who is handling this?
This is very simply a requirement that the city needs to do every three years to say that, to receive federal transportation funding, that we will adhere to the 1964 Civil Rights Act and that we will make sure that our communications on our buses and everything are, meet the appropriate language of the community. And right now, we have communications of both Spanish and English.
All right.
So if we wanna, if we don't wanna receive federal funding, don't vote on it, but I think we want to.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so at this point, we're gonna adopt and there is a, it was motion by council member Susan Rubio, seconded by Cruz Baca. Any objections? See none, so move.
We're gonna retitle only and wait for the reading.
Yes, thank you. All right, so at this point, guess what?
Overnight parking.
One more.
Overnight, yes, that's right.
One more.
Okay, all right, so yes, the overnight parking ordinance.
This is very simply, at the direction of the council at the last meeting, and I don't think we had any other changes, was to move the limitations from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
All righty. Is that correct, Councilman Ricardo Pacheco, from 10A?
10:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Right. You know, and the other change I wanna make is that I would like to just, to start to focus just on some of the main streets, in particular like Ramona, Arrow Highway, Ramona, Ballin Park Boulevard, Puente Avenue, Pacific, Los Angeles, just kind of the main corridors, but not where all the residential areas are. And I would like to just start that first. I know this may restart the, we have to rewrite it and then start again with the first reading, but if that's what it takes, we'll make that change and then just bring it back.
So for now, it's, we're not gonna make any changes, but direction to staff in terms of coordinating on the main arterials.
Right, so you would have to change that, I think, in the ordinance and bring it back, or I don't know if you would, but-
Well, I think, well, you can make, what you're talking about is an enforcement issue that you would like staff to concentrate on, those streets first, but the ordinance would be citywide, but in terms of enforcement, you would want them to be-
No, I would not, I would not want to put that code, that ordinance on like residential areas, just, just on the major artery streets.
So in essence, so in essence, okay, so they could park them residential? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, they could.
Mayor Protem, this sounds like a fundamental change in the ordinance, so we would need to get together with you, make the changes that you suggest and then bring it back in another council meeting.
Can I ask a question real quickly? I'm a little confused because I only wanna get rid of this type of advertisement on our streets. I'm thinking if anything, I would, if I had a home, I would not want something parked in front of my house. Once again, we talked about property values and the aesthetics of it, so wouldn't we wanna include the entire city?
I would, but my concern would be if there's a homeowner who drives their truck home from work, what would be the impact? You would not be able to have your, you know, what I'm trying to avoid are companies that just deliberately park five or six of their trucks on the main arteries, but there may be some homeowners that, that drive that commercial vehicle to their home. I don't know, could they park it on their driveway and not on the street? Is that how that would work? Or what would be the impact to a homeowner who works for, you know, an air conditioning company and drives the company truck home? Would he not be allowed to park in front of his house?
But I think that may be different, though, Ricardo, what you're saying. I think, and I, now, now I get it, because I was thinking, what does that mean that we could allow these vehicles? I mean, just seems like they're everywhere now, ever since you brought it up. That, that's understandable, maybe that's, but I don't know how that would be worded in, because I was thinking we'll allow these particular advertising trucks to park in there, but then how do you distinguish, I guess, right?
Well, I have a question for staff. I mean, can we ask them to get a permit if you have a vehicle to show proof of residency? We don't want outsiders coming in and parking in front of someone's home. I mean, what's gonna happen is you might push all the outside, the main streets and everyone's gonna be moving into the inside streets, which is the home. So I don't know if we can have some kind of permit where they prove, they show proof of residency.
Yes, yes, council member Rubio, we could certainly have an annual permit that would be issued. It would be issued specifically to the vehicle and the person would need to show proof of residence in order to receive the permit.
I have a comment, please. And can we ask that these vehicles be kept in good condition? Because I know there's some of these vehicles that have, they're work vehicles, they have graffiti on them.
That's true.
Or the one, the vehicles that have, that we haul trash, those don't look pretty. Even if, let's say they do live in the city, they still don't look good if they're full of graffiti and they don't look nice.
Yeah, I, I'll lead that one up to the city attorney. I'm not sure how I would craft-
Well, I think I would first, let's start with the, with the issues of the parking permits and kind of in the residential, I mean, how would we word the ordinance for that?
Yes, Mayor Protem, there are ordinances in other cities that have the permit process and I looked at that before drafting this ordinance.
Okay.
So I can go back and do that for you and come up with a permit ordinance if that is the direction of the council. And in addition, I wanna let you know about the driveway. Under the ordinance right now, if you were parking in the driveway, you would not be sighted, only on the street, as it stands right now.
Okay, so we approved it as is and then follow up with another ordinance that allows a permit process?
I would suggest that you not approve this ordinance, that you allow me to go back and change it to make it a permit ordinance and bring it back to city council.
Okay, then let's do that.
Why don't we do that? Because you know what's amazing? You go through neighboring cities, Covina City, West Covina, Urwando, even Elmani and for some odd reason, what I've heard, they're lax in Ballin Park. So now, again, go down Walmart, you get an opportunity this evening, you have every vehicle parked down, they're taking advantage and it's affecting those residents there because again, they're coming from outside saying, well, park our vehicle, nothing's gonna happen here. Of course, this is gonna be something that's gonna be interesting, because even if you go like to say Southgate, some of those other cities, they also have permits and I didn't realize that, I just found that out, for parking, that they have, just like us, a lot of vehicles out there, but they're, they're much more uniform as how they enforce it. And again, those particular trucks that you brought up, they are literally everywhere advertising. I'm not certain what we can do, they're even in the Home Depot, that whole area there, just inundated with them, but nevertheless. All right, so at this point, the direction was given, right?
The direction is to revise a program to allow for a permitting ordinance?
Yes, you'd like me to go back and redraft the ordinance to make it a permit ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. Will that still, will the 10 o'clock at night till 6:00 in the morning still apply?
Yes, I would still leave it there.
Yes, and it's important, it's a way to clean up the city from these particular type of vehicles. I mean, and it just, we need to be tough on that one and stick together. All right, yes.
Mayor, now that you've mentioned other cities, I'm curious to know how other cities are addressing this. Can we insert, you know, that into this conversation just so that we're very thoughtful about, you know, what's worked for other cities and what hasn't and we can insert that into the language and the ordinance that we adopt?
Council member Garcia, if you'd like me to get copies of other ordinances in other cities, some permit, some non-permit, you know, give you a wide variety.
Like an analysis, just a very, you know, like even a summarized analysis, just so we have a good sense, you know, what's working in what cities and how we can apply that here.
I think that would be best done by staff and that way, you know, I don't have to charge for that and I'll just do the resolution, okay?
Yeah, I, I, I will, I will provide all the council members with a...
And coordinate with the captain?
Yes.
Since, yes, parking.
It doesn't have to be all 88 cities in the county, right, but, but just a handful where it is actually being effective.
Yeah, exactly, do the neighboring, let's just do the neighbors, I mean, it's, and, and outside, of course, but, alright.
So we'll, we'll do the research on what neighboring cities have done with the permit program, and come back with you with a report and revised ordinance.
Yes.
And then we let the residents know eventually, once we, that, what we're going to introduce to the city, and we'll go from there. Alright, so at this point, I believe that's the last item there, right?
Yes.
Alright, before, before we close, I just want to bring up, I know we've talked about this before, and have to have a follow-up about, there's a lot of homeless throughout the city, and it just seems to be increasing for some odd reason, and we need to get these homeless shelters to assist us, so I don't know, who am I going to refer this to? Am I referring over to the law enforcement, or, okay, Captain, we could work on some. One thing, there hasn't been a lot that hang out by the Ballin Park as your leave out there, because it was one, another one, you know, practicing hygiene, washing her face and everything, out of that water fountain, and then just dumping things in there, so that seems to subside. The, two days ago, I was coming down from Kaiser, north on the actual bridge, and there was a homeless guy, almost got hit, almost got hit, the guy got off the car and yelled at him, but somehow, we could stop by and let, let them know, you can't be there. Now they've got their little encampment right in, right in the medium there, and then right across in, on the target property, we need to somehow clean that up and redirect them somehow. And I know that we assist them, have taken them over to, to some of these shelter homes, and they're come back out, and that's unfortunate. A lot of them, some of them may be veterans, and I know that we're working on possibly bringing something like that to the city, or, or some of the parcels that we have, but we have to address the homeless, because they are literally everywhere, and we have to somehow house them, because they are affecting some of the businesses, a couple of them, I won't mention their name, but they're saying that they're distracting the local business as well, so we just want to see, what can we do humanly to assist them, and hopefully guide them into a different direction.
Mayor, I have one thing before, I'm glad you mentioned that, because it reminded me of something that was, has been brought up to me on several occasions, and I don't know what we can do about this, and I think Manny, I should address this to you, I think. Apparently, some of the restrooms at the parks are open all night. I, I, I believe that the one at Walnut Creek is, or it has been open, or, I don't know if it's, is it you, Dan? But anyway, one of the, one of the, the bathroom at Walnut Creek is, it was open late, all night long, a week or so ago, a few days ago. When the people come to use the restroom, they find that some of the homeless people have been either sleeping there, or have been using the facility, and it wasn't left in very good condition. So my concern is, are we leaving the bathrooms open all night, and if we are, is there something we can do about that? Because that's not a real good idea.
Yes, we, we do have staff locking up the restrooms, it is done manually, so I will double-check with staff, but we have staff assigned seven days a week to lock up the restrooms. We do have a janitorial crew that comes in the middle of the night, approximately 3:00 AM, and they do clean the restrooms for the 8:00 AM opening, so maybe Mr. Wall could elaborate a little bit more on, on that.
Yes, we do have a janitorial crew that does clean all 63 restrooms within the city nightly, and, like you said, though, occasionally, we'll have a homeless person, or some, somebody gets into a restroom that either wasn't locked, or they've broken into, create a mess there. We'll, we'll work on making sure that everything's secured, though.
Alright, and one other area I want to touch up before we close up, there's a, it's a Ledford, Ledford and Farnell, I believe it is, that's where the, these homes, kind of, there's a home that, there's a gate right next to that, actually, no, it is a Ledford and, and Farnell. There's a home right next to the access down to the LA County River area, and the gate's broken off, so we need to somehow, somehow, see if we could repair that, because you have homeless people going right through that particular area, so that needs to be cordoned off, and a little too dangerous for them to be out there, and I know they probably make their home in that area, but there's a wrought iron fence, fence in front of it, and then the side, that's where the chain link fence has been torn down. If you could catch that, I'd appreciate that.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
Let's have a couple of items. One, I did attend the Valley County Water District Public Awareness Day, a very well-attended event, it was a lot of community residents there, and I would like to ask if the Public Works Department could get with the water company to talk about some of their drought-tolerant plants that they have, and if we could implement that program here, and also had a, a discussion with Director Contreras there, and the sidewalk on that, which street is that, Al?
Joan Bridge.
Joan Bridge. The sidewalk on Joan Bridge, next to the plant there, is, is really in bad condition, and if you could coordinate with the Water District, because there's some trees there, I think that they need to be, the roots need to be trimmed back, and maybe they could do that part of it, and then the city could, could repair the sidewalk, because it's really in, in bad condition there. I also like to request to the city manager, if we could have a ceremony for the outgoing commissioners, and, and a ceremony for the new incoming commissioners, and have a reception for them at our next, at our next meeting. If Public Works could clean the, the red brick building on Bedillo and San Bernardino Road, right by the, by the MetroLink parking lot there, the, the red brick building has, on that property, there, there's just a lot of debris there, and sort of things that have been piled up there, and a number of residents have complained to me about that, and we need to do our part as a city, and any, any other sites that you know that are really in public view, we need to continue to, to clean up. And I know you cleaned up the one by Big Dalton, so I appreciate that we had done that. We had a specific plan meeting the day after Memorial Day, it went very well, we talked about a number, we presented, what was presented to the city council, to the public, and we're starting to do an outreach with the Arroyo Group to talk about a lot of the planning that we have, and the specific plan, and, and talking about a lot of that, so hopefully we get some of our, our commissioners involved, our planning commissioners in particular, and all our other commissioners in the community, to partake a little bit more in that, in that area. So there's been a, a lot of discussion about doing a, a lot of new improvements there, plazas, and improving our downtown landscape, so we're kind of looking at, at doing that, and hopefully we could kind of move forward in that area. Also, I'd like to congratulate Mike Taylor, his daughter's expecting, he's going to be a grandpa, so that's why he's not here today, he's in the hospital, and I think they were expecting the, the, the baby today at some time, so hopefully we could send some flowers and a congratulation card to, to the Taylor family there. And, let's see, what else I have here? Manny Creo's daughter, is he here?
He's right here.
Daughter graduated, congratulations, it's awesome.
Mike Salas.
Now it's time to pay the bill.
And, and also, our distinguished city clerk, Alejandra Avila's daughter, Brandy Lopez, graduated from University of Laverne in Behavioral Sciences, so congratulations, very good. She won't judge me, I don't know. Alright, and that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. At this point, I will move for adjournment.
I have a couple of announcements, Mayor, just really quickly.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Just want to remind the, the residents that we have the concerts in the park coming up, so make plans. We did cut them down from 10 to 4, so we have one July 10th, July 17th, July 24th, and July 31st, so please look at our website, we have all the information there. Secondly, I also would like to ask that we send a letter of congratulations to all the local elected, that got elected last night on behalf of the council, if that's okay. You know, as you know, we have our new supervisor, Hilda Solis, so we want to make sure that we, that she feels welcomed, and that we acknowledge her victory, so if we can do that, that would be great. Also, I'm, I'm going to ask Manny Creo, I was looking at some of the literature that, that we have, and I noticed that our city clerk and city treasurer are not included, and, you know, they were elected by the people, so I think they should know who the represent, representatives are, so please include them in all literature that we send out. Thank you.
We will.
And, that is it, thank you.
Yes.
Dan, I want to thank you, I just drove by Francis Kito, you guys just trimmed down all those trees, it looks nice and neat. I know they were overgrowing from the bottom, thank you, they look a lot nicer.
And I'd like to request something. I was told by Terry Muse that Fernando Prado, who has been an employee of Waste Management for 43 years, is going to be retiring.
Oh, I know who he is, wow.
And I would like to see if we can acknowledge that, or recognize him at the June 18th meeting.
Perfect. Alrighty, any, anything else?
Happy Father's Day.
If not, at this point, I will, yes, I will move for adjournment, that is my motion.
I'll second it.
Second, any objections seen now, good night, viva Ballin Park.